All the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We also have one council member and our city administrator and city attorney are online. Just as a law of the people that are online to introduce themselves, that allows us to check the sound quality. Sharon, do you want to start?
Karen Hanson, City Administrator.
Craig Schaefer, City Council, Board Three.
Pamela Whitmore, City Attorney.
Okay, very good. The, we do have an agenda before us because we have one council member that is joining us remotely. All of our votes will be voice votes this evening, not electronic votes. So we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we operate under that agenda. The first item would be consider the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 11th. Council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion, actually, let me back up a little bit. We also need to do roll call. Well, Pam, can you correct me on this? Do we need to do roll call votes or Pam, City Attorney?
For the business items, we need to do roll call votes for any of the council votes. So.
Okay, so we're okay. We're okay so far.
You're okay so far.
Okay. And just clarification, we're going to move to the consent agenda and that would be a business item.
Do we need the public hearing first?
Public hearing also, yes. Okay. Okay. So with that, the, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two, and this is the public hearing on the moratorium of the operation of cannabis businesses. So we'll conduct a public hearing and then following the public hearing, we will consider the ordinance establishing the, the moratorium, well, actually repealing the moratorium on the operation of the cannabis businesses. So I'll call in City Attorney Pam Whitmore to conduct this public hearing. Pam?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. So in front of you, there is a moratorium and the public hearing on this moratorium is to consider an ordinance for having an interim ordinance on the operation of what's called cannabis businesses, which we have to date been calling them the higher level products. Later on the agenda as a business item, there is the repeal of the existing moratorium, which actually was automatically would be repealed in July anyway. It's number 23-015, and that is a part of the consideration for the business item later on the agenda, which is an ordinance for the registration of lower level products. So this, this hearing on the higher level products is the allowed under Minnesota statutes 342 with respect to cannabis businesses, which is defined by our state legislature as those higher level products that contain cannabis flour and extract. And so it enables us to see what the Office of Cannabis Management is going to do with respect to the model ordinance that they are putting together and the administrative rules with respect to definitions and whatnot related to those licenses of those cannabis businesses, which are all involving higher level products. So this is allowed under the state statute 342 until January 1st of 2025, and, and will still enable us to do our business item later on the agenda.
Okay. Any input from members of the audience or members of the city council as part of this public hearing?
So to, so I can understand this, this is to let the state catch up to the law they created, per se?
Correct.
Okay.
And the Pam, you, you actually referred to this, but the Office of Cannabis Management does not expect to be issuing licenses until after January 1st anyway.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. They have amended just this most recent session for the end of this July to allow what they're calling preliminary licensing. So you'll see in the ordinance that this puts a moratorium on any preliminary licensing of those higher level businesses so that we can get our zoning in place as, with respect to the higher level businesses, the businesses that are involved in the production and distribution and sale of the higher level products, the cannabis products. So there is some language included in this moratorium that relates to the preliminary approvals that currently are going on by the OCM. Those preliminary approvals, however, would still need to be approved later by licensing through the Office of Cannabis Management.
Okay, thank you.
The question I have is why are we creating a moratorium on something that can't be done until after January 1st anyway, since our moratorium is just through January 1st?
Pam, you want to address that?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. So they are, as I referenced, they are putting in place preliminary approvals. So that is giving some of these businesses the ability to have kind of first dibs on, on, on a license. And as part of that, they're identifying locations. And so with respect to any type of zoning that we do, we don't want to get caught in a timeframe where there's been a preliminary license issued and then we have some kind of zoning, which would be reasonable zoning, that would impact that preliminary approval. So this is just something that is just a safeguard that we don't get stuck in some kind of loop where there's been a preliminary approval and then we try to walk that back with respect to the location.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to close the public hearing discussion. If not, I'll call on City Clerk to, Stephen Anderson, to call the roll on the vote for the vote.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. So that motion does pass. We'll move then to consider the ordinance that would establish the moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. Is there, are there any questions about the ordinance? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by C, seconded by John, for the, the ordinance establishing the moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. Any discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Once again, Stephen, if you call the roll.
Meister?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Stephen. You probably noted, council noted that he is altering the order in which he calls the roll. So, so you know that going forward. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include the introduction of the joint airport zoning ordinance, consider the request for a street closure for Arts and Living Festival for September 28th, 2024, that Saturday, consider authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the Marshal Police Department, the military surplus equipment program, and consider approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any, any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. Discussion on that motion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Schroder?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Eight. This is a pre-development agreement for the affordable apartment complex. Lauren, are you going to present this one? I'll call on Lauren Deitz, Economic Development Authority, to present this agenda item. Council does recall this was also considered roughly a year ago, and then that funding was not approved, and it's basically the same project with a little different structure.
Correct. So we do have Tim with us tonight, Tim Trimble. He will be joining us virtually to answer any questions that you might have. But as Mayor Burns mentioned, we came forward last year with a pre-development agreement for tapestry companies to apply for Minnesota Housing's tax credit program. Unfortunately, there was a large number, number of applications and we, our project was not approved. Some of the indication that the developer received from the state is that our scoring just didn't meet high enough, so they weren't considered as part of the competitive projects. So we took a look this year to see how we could potentially improve our scoring, and one of the areas that we have impact on is the community support. So we are bringing forward pretty much the same project. We are only going to submit the housing, or the family housing, not the senior. That will be a phase two project. So the intent is still to build both, but we feel as though the application becomes stronger with just one project at this time. So it is 60 units, two, three, and four bedroom. I did do a quick rundown on the rent rates. So they are 30% to 50% of the area median income. So that would put a two bedroom between 600 and 1,000, and then the four bedrooms up to just roughly 800 or to 1,300 for the month. So much more affordable than some of the other units we have in town. So from the EDA side, what we are proposing to bring forward for our support is we want to keep the 500,000 for the road project because that is still essential for the project and access into the site. So we have our unrestricted pool TIF that we would like to use for that. But in addition, we're now going to have the developer purchase the property from us and then give the money back to them in a form of assistance. They've got an indication that that actually helps their application to have a more cash incentive versus the land incentive. In addition, the EDA did approve at our last meeting to include another 10,000 of our housing fund money that we received from the Department of Revenue this year. So we did allocate 10,000 towards the project for that as well. So that is what we're bringing forward as our terms. As I mentioned, Tim is available online to answer additional questions if there are any.
Thank you. Tim, do you have anything that you want to add?
Well, I just would like to say thank you so much for your support. As Lauren mentioned, last year, we did apply for both the family and the senior. We did not get selected for either one. Subsequent conversation, MHFA said you just cut that and only do one at a time. So we selected the family to start this year. We've also hired a lobbyist firm, Solomson Group, to help with some of the political lobbying behind the scenes, if you will. So we've been trying to approach this in a number of areas. I think Lauren mentioned some of those. We've also brought in a consultant, the Land and Group, to help with the whole application, preparation, application process. Our current review shows that we have increased our points, and as Lauren mentioned, it's a point-driven system for approval. So we feel like we're in much better shape for a, an application that will be reviewed and approved this year than last year. And again, I want to thank the city for its continued support.
Okay, thank you.
And we also did receive county funding for this project. The county did give us their housing money, two-year allocation, so roughly 225,000 towards the project.
Correct.
Questions the council has?
The only question I have, all 60 units will be affordable housing.
Correct. All will be between the 30% and 50% AMI.
I think this, this is very needed in the city marshal.
Any other questions? If not, you have the pre-development agreement for consideration.
I would entertain a motion to approve the pre-development agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'd second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, or Stephen, would you call the roll for the vote?
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Nine, consider the request for a conditional use permit for a triplex in a B1 limited business district. This will be presented by Ilya Gutman.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request for a condition use permit for apartment in B1 limited business district. You all know this building, it's where the license bureau used to be. The license bureau moved out and the owner wanted to add an apartment instead of that license bureau. But apartments are condition use in limited business districts, so that's why the owner has to get a condition use permit for that thing. It, it is in downtown, so requirements for parking and yards is not applicable, so it really meets all the criteria for granting condition use. So the recommendation is to approve it. It went through the Planning Commission, a public hearing already.
This was also considered by the Planning Commission. Amanda, any comments from the Planning Commission?
Correct. No, there weren't really any discussion or concerns, none from the public. That's where the public hearing was. And then they just all kind of agreed that does make sense for the area. This use makes sense. There's houses along that street and it, all their concerns.
You know, and this, this use, even though parking is not a consideration because of the downtown district, parking will be improved from the previous use because there was a lot of traffic that was in and out there when it was the license bureau, so.
That was the comment I was going to make, Bob. This is a better use, and there's a parking lot in the back of this building. So this is a much better use of this building than what it was for the last 40 years.
Very good. Any other questions for Ilya? If not, is there a motion to?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Go ahead. Pam?
So as the council well knows, there's sign findings of fact from the Planning Commission with all their considerations that the council has considered as part of this, this evening. And just for purposes of the public knowing, there is a resolution that depending on what the council decision is, will be reflecting those findings of facts for purposes of the council's consideration.
So the, the motion should include the resolution also?
Well, so the motion will be with the direction for the, the execution of the resolution by you, Mr. Mayor, attested by Stephen, to reflect the council's findings.
Okay.
And, and I, without interrupting you again, that same commentary is true for the other CUP as well.
Council, have any questions? So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion along with whatever Pam's that we had included, the resolution that Pam's that we have included, the motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John, to approve the conditional use permit as well as the resolution reflecting the findings of fact. I believe that's what your motion was. Discussion on that motion? If not, Stephen, we'll move to a vote.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is consider the request for a conditional use permit to install a billboard. Location would be 1604 East College Drive. Once again, Ilya.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a request for the conditional use for a billboard. All billboards require a conditional use permit, and this billboard meets requirement, specific billboard requirements size-wise and distance, minimal distance to other billboards and to residential area. Since this billboard, there are not too many other criteria that can be applicable, so that's, but in this case, everything is met. And again, it went through the Planning Commission, a public hearing. It was a recommendation to approve, and the staff recommendation is to approve this one, too.
Okay. And Amanda from the Planning Commission?
No concerns at all about the billboard.
Okay. Questions the council has?
Stephen, can you pull up where this actually is? I have a pretty good idea, but I just wanted where it's located on the, I, do you have a bigger map of where that is? Or what are those buildings? That's ABRA, correct?
Correct.
That is?
Wayne's Tractor.
Wayne's Tractor. So it goes on Wayne's Tractor's property?
Yes.
I guess my only concern is we're starting to see a lot of these pop up in town. And I know when I drive, and I'm not trying to pick on the state next to us, I drive to some of their communities and think, boy, they're ugly because there's a lot of billboards. And we're getting to a lot, we're starting to see a lot more billboards. And one of the nice things about marshalling, you came into it, you didn't have all these big billboards. I mean, it does affect the look of your community. Pretty soon, all these billboards will have Chris Lindell on them. You're not really getting irritated. But I just, I want us to be careful. I don't, I don't like this. I think we're getting too many billboards and it is going to start affecting the site views that we have in the community. And that, you know, that's my opinion. And I just, I think we're, we're getting too, we have one on the west side of town that they can't even get signs on. It's sitting by my shop. It's been up for, what, six months? No, eight months, and there's no signs on it yet.
Correct. And this one is not digital either. This is?
Yeah, but I read that. That is not digital. But I just think we're starting to get too many of these. It's a ruin that, I think it ruins the look of our community.
So the, good comments, fair statement. The, that likely would be a discussion with the Legislative Ordinance Committee about our, our signed ordinance and if it should be revised or not.
And if we give them a conditional use permit, does that mean that sticks with this property forever?
Correct.
So should we maybe change this to a different permit? So if this sign comes down, would they don't, they have to go back to our new ordinance to put it up?
I'm not sure we can do it because again, by law, condition use permit stays with the ordinance, sorry, with the property.
Correct. That's why I said before we issue the condition use permit, should we maybe look at doing an interim use permit? So when the sign, so in 30 years, if this sign is dilapidated and comes down, we've created an ordinance, they're not allowed to have billboards anymore, that they have to comply with their ordinance, or if we just give them the condition use permit, this is with this property forever?
The ordinance refers to billboard as requiring condition use permits. I'm not sure that we can change it to interim use or?
Mr. Mayor, Council, since our, since our code states this is an allowable use with a conditional use permit, the council member's comments are, are very good, but it would, it would require us to change our ordinance language, to change it from a conditional use to what I think the council member is referring to as an interim use. But right now, as of today, when the application came in, it's an allowed conditional use. And so if it meets the conditions, then we really don't have a reasonable basis to deny it.
Thank you, Pam. And further input on, or questions? If not, you do have the, the request and you had the recommendation following the review by the Planning Commission. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by John. Discussion?
The only thing, discussion I have, I gotta give my opinion, but I think this should be kicked the LNO and look at the language in our, so we make it an interim use permit so it doesn't permanently stick with the properties.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, Stephen, would you call the roll and take the vote?
Mulewski?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Lizinski?
No.
Schroder?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes. The motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya.
Thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 11, consider the approval of the significant industrial user agreements with the wastewater treatment facility. So Jason, do you want to introduce this and then we'll turn it over to Scott?
Sure. While Scott walks up here, I can kick us off here. There's been numerous changes at the, with our wastewater discharge permit, most notably our new NPDES permit. So with these changes came necessary revisions to our SIU agreements. So Scott's up here, so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Council. A little background, October 5th, 2022, City Marshal entered into an MOU regarding sampling and development of a pollution management plan for PFAS, which is per and polyfluoralecholhy substances. On March 1st, 2024, City Marshal received the new NPDS permit that includes a 15-year scheduled compliance for sulfates and a 10-year chloride variance. The MPCA requires all publicly owned treatment works, POTWs, to regulate their industrial users to prevent interference and pass-through of the POTW. This includes industries that discharge greater than 25 gallons per day, consume 5% or more of the POTW's capacity, or can cause the POTW to violate its permit standards.
25,000 gallons.
25,000 gallons, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, the City Marshal has SIU agreements with five local industries. Due to the new, the city's new discharge requirements, SIU agreements need to be updated to include a limit for chloride, cooperation with the city, schedule of compliance for sulfate in cooperation with the PFAS management plan. The new SIU agreements are created of the input from the MPCA Pre-Treatment Coordinator, Flattery and Hood Environmental Attorneys, and our city attorney. Each agreement contains appendices that address the needs of individual SIUs. Staff discussed the changes of their SIUs at meetings over the last several years, and all the SIUs have agreed to and signed the new agreements. So looking for approval from the city council for the agreements.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Pam, do you have any comments you want to make on this agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, we had the opportunity, Troy Gilchrist in our office had the opportunity to review.
Okay, thank you. Questions the council has? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the SIU agreements.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you call for the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Scott, stay up here.
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Mulewski?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Scott, as long as you're here, and we'll probably be talking about this later, but the flooding potential event that we had over the weekend, just thank you to you and your staff for the good planning. You were involved in the planning meeting that we had on Thursday prior to the heavy rainfall event, and then you were closely monitoring the wastewater plant as well as the lift stations and distribution systems. So thank you and your staff for very good work over the weekends.
We have, we have a good staff, and the City Marshal's been proactive with, we've got an equalization basin out there. We can hold 10 million gallons of wastewater. So that comes into play when we have events like this, so.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 12, consider the authorization for the HVAC system repairs at the airport arrival, departure building. I'll call on Jason Anderson, City Engineer, Director of Public Works, to present this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll introduce this item and let the council know that Dean Kudron, our Public Waste Superintendent, is also present to help address any questions. So in the packet, you should have a quote from Direct Digital Control of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. That quote is to update the HVAC control system at the Southwest Minnesota Regional Airport Arrival Departure Building. The existing equipment is old and outdated. Parts and supplies are no longer available. Because this system is a proprietary system and sole source, we only have the one quote from Direct Digital Control to consider. Included in the 2024 CIP- Included in the 2024 CIP is $40,000 for these repairs. If the council authorizes all repairs in this quote, the total amount is $44,340. We would recommend that we move forward with this work. If there are any questions, Dean or myself can try to address them.
Okay, thank you. Jason, questions the council has?
I have a couple of questions, Jason, and the bid looks, but there's a lot in here that, input devices, they reuse them unless otherwise noted. So if they run into these and they can't reuse them, that becomes a change order? Or have they kind of said that this is what it may cost if we have to replace them?
Dean, do you want to come forward?
Yeah, I would defer that question to Dean Kudrin. He's been more involved with that.
It's just like in general, usually existing closures, rezeroing where possible?
Yeah, most, he did look at the system.
He did.
For about five years ago, he wanted me to update it, because this equipment has been outdated for 12 years. Currently, we are taking circuit boards from other VAV boxes and moving them to priority areas. So, but as far as some of the stuff that's on notice in here, like you're talking about, that will be covered. I don't see any issue with them coming back and asking for more money on any of that.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions, as long as Dean's here, and for either Dean or Jason?
Dean, I have one question. It says to recalibrate the 18 VAV boxes, add 2550. So we're going to recalibrate those, too?
Right.
Reason behind recalibrating them to bring them up to speed?
Right, because what it does is calibrate the amount of air volume for each room that VAV box controls.
Okay.
You know, rather than just let them run wild, they do a calibration to try and keep not too much air, but just enough to keep the air moving in that particular room.
Okay, thank you.
And this building is, what, 20, I think it is, new building, it's about 25 years old, isn't it?
It's 22 years old. These are, this was installed in '02.
So the system's been going through once, or that's when the building was built?
Yep, it's all original.
So the furnaces, the heating sources are all good, then?
No, that's what the VAV boxes are. The air conditioning unit is one centralized unit, and that just flows air through each VAV internally, but there's, it's controlled individually by the VAV, the amount of air coming through.
20 years off a system like this is?
It's like any computer system, you know, look how often you got to update your computers, you know, because this system uses four motherboards that controls 18 VAV boxes.
20 years old is what it is.
Yep.
Well, thank you, Dean.
Yep.
Was this budgeted for, or is, or is it surprise?
Yes, Councilman, $40,000 was included in the capital budget.
This will make the system much more efficient, too.
That's the whole thing behind it, too. It'll be a lot more efficient than what we have today. Some of, like the snow melt center out front doesn't work. We control that manually, or it should be all automated. But I knew down the line we're going to have to replace it, so it was waited.
Mr. Mayor, so 40,000 has been budgeted. What about the other $4,400 that's not budgeted? Where's that going to come from?
I'm going to have to try and find that in the budget somewhere, try and keep it.
So within, within the current airport budget?
Right. I'll have to try and keep, it's 4,300 bucks, so.
Yeah.
And who knows, maybe once I do it, maybe it will come in cheaper. Who knows, you know, depending what they all have to do. I'm hoping it comes in cheaper.
It won't snow till January 1st, so we'll be good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I move approval.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, Stephen, would you call the vote?
Lizinski?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Wuleski?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes, the motion does pass. Dean, I could say the same thing about your leadership as I said about Scott. So thank you for you and your department, you know, doing all of the extra monitoring over the weekend, and cleaning out catch basins, and doing a lot of, lot of things. So thank you. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number 13, the registration requirements for the sale of intoxicating cannabinoid products and the amendments to our zoning. And I'll call on City Attorney Pam Whitmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. This, this is a final consideration of this ordinance, which was introduced earlier last month. And so it establishes a registration system for the lower level products. Those were previously banned from our moratorium, so this lifts that ban, that part of the ban. And it is a registration system to enable us to know where these products are being sold, so we can comply with the compliant, necessary compliance checks that's required under state law. It also allows for the onsite consumption of edible products at onsite licensed intoxicating liquor licensees and the brewery. It, it includes some zoning restrictions in various zoning districts to not allow these types of retailers to sell within 500 feet of schools as identified by a map, because we're using a line from the center of the primary building, which could be confusing. So we are also going to be including a map as far as what that is. The reason why it didn't go from lot line is because of different locations that might be too prohibitive for certain retailers. It also includes the restriction of no home business sales of these types of products in residential home businesses. And, and so that is also included in the proposed ordinance. And that concludes my, my overview, and I am available for comments. Also, just to let you know that this is, we're also obviously recommending the summary publication of this ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Any input from the Legislative Ordinance Committee?
We took through this through several meetings, and I think we've come up with a good ordinance. There's compromises from everybody. I know we had our Chief of Police in on these discussions, and he is willing to compromise, which I appreciate it. And I think it's a good ordinance. The state kind of left us hanging here because they haven't given a whole lot of guidance, or zero, actually. So I think it is a good compromise with the lower THC's allow that into Marshall.
Stephen, did you ever?
Nope, I'm good.
Any other input from the council?
This was at Planning Commission, it's a public hearing also. And there was no concern from the public, not really any concern from Planning Commission either, just kind of some questions of legality of THC, and, but nothing related to the ordinance, so.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation from the, both the Planning Commission, as well as the Legislative Ordinance Committee. I would entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, Stephen?
Lizinski?
Yes.
Wuleski?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mayor Burns?
Yes, the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 14, consider appointments of various boards, commission, bureaus, and authorities. Earlier this evening, the council did meet and interviewed applicant for various boards and commissions. And based on that interview, I would recommend that Nick Schwartz be appointed to the Economic Development Authority to fill a vacant term that will expire May 31st, 2027. And note that this will not count as a full term, because it is an unexpired term. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Or Stephen, would you call the, the vote?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Meister?
Yes.
Alcorn?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Wuleski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Stephen. That should be our last roll call vote of the evening. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 15, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing.
Steve?
Our last, what is it now, the 12th, have we, so the last EDA meeting met the day after our last council meeting on the 12th, and we had election of our officers. We had the housing funds that Lauren already presented. And that was the vast majority of it. I'll let Amanda take the other thing, so she has something to say.
I wasn't there.
Oh, geez. She wasn't there. I do remember that. They also had a couple of other, you know, we're talking about the development and of the solubility coming in, and that was about it. So not much more.
Great. And Amanda?
Planning Commission, we covered everything that we talked about at Planning Commission and the other business items tonight.
Okay, mine have not met. John?
Nothing.
C?
The Library Board did meet with Commissioner, or the Lyon County and city staff and the Chair of the Board to just look over the budget. So they will be sending that soon here. It was a very early meeting. CVB met, and let me see here. They have been talking about trying to get a hunting cleaning station, mostly for pheasants around here. I know they had asked Runnings, but Runnings had, corporate office had declined. I don't, they don't know the reasons why. But so they are looking at maybe some of the hotels to have some cleaning stations there. And I think that would be great for directing people over to the hotels as well, too, because we do have a lot of people that hunt here, so. And then Thursdays and 3rd is starting next month, so it'll be July, August, September. It'll be right out here. And I don't know if they're doing some on the Terrance, too. And then it's also summer, Prairie Jam, we're gearing up, and then Arts and Living History Festival. That's it.
Very good. And Jim?
I did not meet.
We'll, we'll move then to the next agenda item, which is Councilmember Individual Items. Craig, let's start on your end. And it's good to see you. You're visually, you're, this evening, so good.
You appreciate me being right side up finally?
Right.
Yeah, me too. I was getting a headache last time I did that. Yeah, I have, I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Steve?
I have nothing here, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda? Jim?
I have a couple of things. We're working out of Medelia, Minnesota, which had a lot of rain, and looking at the flooding they had there, it's kind of, well, it's kind of sad. And it just makes me think of all the work that we've done in Marshall to prevent that from happening. I know Sharon earlier this week emailed me some pictures from, she said it was a 75 flood, I think it was a 65 flood. But to see what used to happen in Marshall, which is not happening now, it shows the hard work that's been done by the City Marshal, by the state. Our mayor's been working on this for 30 years. It's paying dividends. It really, at this point, our lives are going on normally. We're not pumping sewage into the river because basements are backing up. We didn't even have sewer backup. I mean, all the work we've done, yes, it costs money. Yes, it may raise our taxes, but it is well worth it. As somebody who's lived through sewer backup, it is extremely well worth it. So I just, it's years of work, and all those have worked, and I appreciate it. And second, and I visited Jim Marshall about this, and his, his staff is working on it. Just because there's a road construction going on on the street, stop signs do not become optional. I appreciate, Jim, your help on stopping and patrolling that and putting flags up. For some reason, the stop sign in front of my house is becoming extremely optional, and they pretty much slow down to 30 miles an hour. Like I said, I worked at Jim. He's put a patrol car out there, so hopefully he's going to stop that. There's a lot of kids. Folks, just stop at a stop sign. It's not that hard to do. So and again, I thank you, Jim, for listening to me and, and working on that. Really appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay. C?
I don't have anything.
And John?
Nothing.
Let me talk about just a couple of things. First off, last week on Wednesday, June 19th, was the Juneteenth. It was actually the only nice day last week. It was weather-wise, it was a beautiful day. And the Juneteenth activities and the participation level was very good. As, as we all know, it was downtown on 3rd Street from over the noon hour and into the early afternoon, and then it moved to Justice Park with the entertainment. And there was a really good crowd at both, both venues. So thank you to the city staff, and especially to Sharon Hansen, who gave leadership from the city on pulling all of the details together on that. So it really turned out good, as well as the DEI committee seat. So it was a good event. And then, of course, it wouldn't be a regular city council meeting in this month if we didn't talk about flood control. The, and it's been referred to several times here this evening. I won't go into a lot of detail, but I will kind of lean on both Jason and Jim if they, you have additional comments. But I think to put things in perspective, the, yesterday at 11 to 12 o'clock, and Alex was involved in this, too, the crest was, was reached, that was 15.98 feet, which is the third highest in recorded history in, on the river. The highest, which really doesn't count, is, was 19, almost 19.8 feet, Jason, about. And that was in the, because of the ice jam. So it was a different type of an event. And then, of course, it receded very rapidly once the, once the ice broke up. And then the second highest, Alex, was 2018 on July 3rd, and that, I believe, was 17.4 feet. So this was the third highest. And of course, you know, flood stage begins at 14 feet on the, on the gauge. And as Jim, as you mentioned, there's a number of things that, that the city has invested in, and they have worked well. Because but for that, we would, that protection, we would have had issues, major issues in the town. So, so to put that in perspective, that 15.98, that's more than 1957, when almost 88% of the community had floodwater, was flooded. That's more than 1969, which was, again, a pretty devastating flood in the community. And it was more than probably in 1993, although there is some uncertainty about that, because the flood gauge in 93 was at a different location. So it's not exactly a apples to apples. But the long story short is that the flood control investment, you know, it was effective. We reached a high level, and it was, for most citizens in the community, it was a non-event. So that's, that's a good thing. I mentioned, I called out wastewater earlier when Scott was at the podium, because they've done a lot of things to try to reduce the inflow and infiltration into the system. And they've done a lot of work with, with homeowners to help them understand the, you know, the sump, sump pumps, how to properly discharge that. And we have, as Scott has said, we've have very good compliance and, and cooperation from homeowners. So that is also good to see. Jason, do you want to add anything at this time? Or Jim, or Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll just echo your statements that the flood control project is vitally important for our community, and it proved itself once again. Really happy with a lot of dedicated staff that spent a lot of time kind of monitoring, following, and taking different action steps on the wastewater and police and public works. And so that was, that was good. And I'll also echo your statements on sump pumps and other direct inputs into the sanitary sewer system. Those are the biggest impacts that can cause problems for you and your neighbors. So encourage everyone to take a hard look at that and make sure your sump pumps are discharging outside and not inside your home. If it's discharging inside your home, it is going to the sanitary sewer, and that's not where it should be. Very few sump pumps or roof leaders or other direct inputs into the sanitary sewer system, very few is all it takes to cause an issue. So, thank you.
Okay. And Jim, as one of your titles as Director of Public Safety, is also Emergency Management Director for the City of Marshall. Anything you want to add?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. As Mayor mentioned earlier, earlier in the week, on Thursday, we pulled together kind of our emergency management team, consisting of Jason and his assistant, Eric Hansen, Dean, Scott, Mayor, Sharon, and Alex. And we all kind of know our different roles. And as your Director of Public Safety, one of the biggest concerns I always have is weather and emergency management. And this was kind of coming into play. But every time we have a meeting like this with these professional people that know exactly what needs to be done, Scott having all the motors and pumps firing at, at optimum levels, our engineers watching flow rates, volume of water coming into the river, Alex, our meteorologist, giving us a play-by-play accounts. And the only activation really of our emergency plan was a lot of phone calls, maybe some phone calls throughout the weekend, and I'm glad that's the way it is. But it kind of plays into the importance of the mitigation efforts that have been made. And maybe even in the future, as we know, significant events continue to happen, and the volume of water that's introduced into the river that we trust- the volume of water that's introduced into the river, that we trust our engineers, and if there's a little mitigation things that need to be done, we need to listen to them. So, that's all I have to say, but thanks for everybody, and that really played an important part in that.
And the one final thing I'd say about this is, earlier today, Alex and I did another video, we did a video on Friday morning, but we did another one this morning, and that I believe will air yet today, probably at 7:30, I think it's going live, the PM. And this video really talks about the different components of the flood control project, from the fixed weir to the diversion structure, to the volume of water that is released into the diversion channel, and then also how the confluence of the diversion channel and the Redwood River come back together on our 7th Street. So, that's more of a video, because a lot of folks, you know, maybe haven't seen where the, where the diversion structure is, or maybe don't recognize the importance of the fixed base weir at Victory Park. So, we kind of go through an explanation of all of that. Okay. So, I probably talked enough, so I'm going to move then to Agenda Item Number 17, Staff Reports, starting with City Administrator Sharon Hansen. Sharon?
Mayor and city council members, my apologies for not being present tonight. I did have to come up to the Lake and Minnesota Cities Conference a day early, but I appreciate your accommodation for me. I'll keep this very brief, but also want to reiterate what the mayor talked about for Juneteenth. It was really the first year that the city was the main sponsor of the event. It was the first year that, obviously, since 3rd Street is now complete, that, or first time that 3rd Street was used for a function, and it worked really well. So, credit to Public Works, our engineering staff, and City Council for the design of 3rd Street. It served the public and our vendors really well. And our mayor served as the emcee for the Juneteenth event in the evening at Justice Park, and it was a, it was a really good team effort. So, appreciate everyone's support. We had a lot of donations as well to help offset some of the expenditures for Juneteenth. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. With the wet weather, some of our construction projects have been slightly delayed, but everybody's back and working this week, which is good to see. Storm sewer work should be concluding on the two blocks of Whitney that are currently under construction. As far as the mill and overlay project, we expect paving to occur next week, which will be great. There's a lot of milled surfaces that we're ready to get covered back up, so we expect them on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday to be paving. The Minnesota 23 lift station work is ongoing. The wet weather was really an issue for them. It's about the worst time to see a lot of rain, when you have a lift station offline and your bypass pumping. So, that was a little bit of stress for them and the wastewater team, but things are going well there. We expect the paint coating to be applied very soon on the wet well, and then you have to just wait and let it cure. So, they're probably a little behind schedule, but back at it. Last project update would be the parking lot in Independence Park should be finished with paving tomorrow, and then they'll move to sealing the joints and striping the pavement. Perhaps by the end of the week, it's curing and ready to go next week sometime, so things are going well. That's all I've got, and I can answer any questions if you have them.
So, you expect the Independence Park back parking lot to be open by the 4th of July?
Probably usable, you know, from my understanding, from talking with Preston Stenshird, it's probably more of an access for the fireworks team, because that's where they shoot from, and I think it's mostly closed, so probably somewhat usable for that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Jason? If not, the, you have the remaining items on the, oh, excuse me, Pam?
Nothing for the good old old. Thank you, Mayor.
Then we'll move to the remaining items on the agenda. There are information items, including the Public Housing Commission minutes, our listing of, report of cash and investments in the city's finance, Planning Commission minutes, as well as the listing of building permits. And we note in the building permits that there's one very large one, that's for the Marshall's project in the former Shopko building. Correct? Correct. So, then also listed would be the upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting this evening?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, by voice vote, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?